I'd like to enhance the, you've listed Steve and Mike, the portions of the asphalt walking trail, I think the whole asphalt walking trail needs to be, needs to be redone. It's a tripping hazard right now, we're lucky that we don't have any injuries or lawsuits, but when I had the city manager out there the other day, we weren't, we didn't go but ten yards and he tripped, and so.
Have you seen his feet?
They're bent.
He had his running shoes.
Thanks for pointing that out.
And I said to him, "I'm glad you tripped because this is why we need to get this thing fixed," but he said, "Well," you know, and I had a backtrack on that. But at the same time, we do need to fix the whole path because people do run on it, lots of, your little kids ride their, you know, are learning to ride bikes on it, I don't realize there's a moratorium against bicycle riding, but these are little tricycles and stuff like that. So if somebody's gonna get hurt if we don't fix it, the whole thing needs to be done, and I'd like to see that fixed. I was kind of, I guess, I don't really misunderstand really, are we planning on either replacing the concrete markers, or refurbishing them, or painting them, or cleaning them, or is it gonna be all the above on the?
Those are the street?
Yeah, the street markers, right.
Some will be replaced, and some will be, for the price listed there, all of them will be painted annually, and then they will do about a number of street sign replacements. So they'll actually start replacing some of the older crusty.
But there'll be, there's still pillars again, right?
There'll still, we still have the original forms for the concrete.
Okay, 'cause I wasn't sure whether or not you were gonna put things like that in the parking lot.
No.
Okay, fine. All right, well, that's why I wanted to ask, just wanted to ask. And can you give me a little bit of background on the eleven thousand dollars for the inventory and ID stickers of city street lights to assist with lighting issues, so you could, we know where the lights are, we know which, obviously we should have an inventory, do we need to put stickers on there, what's the purpose of that number?
Well, that number is, we actually have a pretty good idea of what all our street lights are, but this will be a GIS inventory where we'll actually go out, they'll record the street light, they'll say whether it's co-red or station light, they'll put a ID marker on it, a GIS location, actually take a picture of it with their iPad, and we'll have a GIS layer map, basically, where we can say, "Street light A is fourteen feet tall, it has this type of light fixture on it, it's series, non-series, and what it is." With that information, we can really start moving forward with LED replacement projects. It's kind of the first step.
What about our new vendor? Isn't the new vendor going to be doing any of that?
That would be, well, on this particular task.
It's item number fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen.
Yeah, MCE says they can go out and perform that task for us.
I guess her question is, is Cal West doing that sort of work?
They, they could, but, you know, for that price, MCE says they'll include that, you know.
Was this in the RFP that we put out, because I thought that they were supposed to do that, but maybe we, maybe we read that into it.
Well, it's something that they can do, but there'll be a charge for it also, so, you know, it's, it's, it's within their realm to be able to do as part of that contract.
Okay.
And that's something that we can weigh and see if, you know, if that budget there, if Cal West could do it cheaper, we would go with Cal West, but MCE saying, "Is it in addition? We will do this for you for this price."
So let me, if I can, there's two hundred and seventy-five of them that you've identified?
Uh, there's about two hundred and sixty that we've identified, I use the two seventy-five number, 'cause I think there's a few out there we don't know about.
Okay, and then you think it's gonna take a hundred and sixty hours?
Up to that D.
A hundred and sixty hours.
Right.
You finished?
One and a half hour piece.
Yeah.
I, I would like to say I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made already about the park, but one of the things that I think is, we don't really have anybody who's in charge of the park, as far as gardening goes, as far as beauty goes, it seems to me that we need somebody who's in charge of the park. I mean, there's been a lot of low-hanging fruit that could have been corrected, that you don't need to be a master gardener to know. I mean, we've killed beautiful oak trees by overboring them, and it seems that if we had somebody that was really designated to be in charge of the landscaping of the park, these things wouldn't happen. And I don't know if we're considering that or not, but at the moment, you know, we have people who do what needs to be done, when they're told that it needs to be done. Steve does a good job in, in, you know, fixing sprinkler systems, and putting in new wells, and doing those things, but as far as the beauty of the park goes, we don't really have anybody who's in charge of it. And I'd like to make a proposal that we designate somebody, if it's this professional master gardener, or, or somebody else, who will be in charge of the park as far as beauty goes.
Well, there's dollar costs connected to whatever that person wants.
No, I understand, but if that person can tell, Steve can tell the people that we have working there, what needs to be done. At the moment, we don't really have anybody doing that.
That's the thirty thousand five fifty.
And to let you know, the dollar.
That's the extra add-on.
The dollar figure, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour that we came up with, perhaps Denise knows it, I spoke with the Master Gardeners Exchange, or the coalition out in Happy Moon Bay, I was referred both by them and from Naomi Ramsen with the Park and Rec Commission to talk with Todd Cole. Todd Cole's a person that serves in the, he's, besides being a master gardener, he's also a landscape architect, a person in that stature that could actually, you know, come up with projects, you know, one at a time that we could pick off, so we still don't have a ton of labor out there, but somebody to help direct our labor.
Absolutely.
So, 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 you know, after the garbage cans are emptied, after the, you know, the restrooms are cleaned, the playground inspections are done, that, that time that's left can be, instead of maybe just blowing leaves every day at the park, or doing the things that we want, you know, a lot of people think that are important, we could start steering them to do. For example, if you park in the parking lot and walk towards the children's playground, there's a row of plants there that have, you know, some, many of them have died, it needs a replanting project, and get, you know, help, help me get MCE lined up to get those guys going, come up with a dollar amount for a project like that and get going. As Park and Rec Commissioner Roser mentioned, it's, it's something that the Park and, these solutions actually came from the Park and Rec's department, it's very important to them, they think that through the years, you know, I know when I started here twelve years ago, a lot of the park was weeds up to your waist, we've come a long way, we've set in a lot of infrastructure into the park, we've done the unsexy things, we've got the new main line pipes, and we've got drainage in, we've started a number of other infrastructure, with new sewer line is in the park. All those things are done now, we can start doing these more beautifying aspects of the park, and to have someone with the resource. Todd Cole, if you don't know him, he's the one that actually spearheaded a large portion of the AIDS Memorial Garden in San Francisco, we had a really good conversation. Another thing that a master gardener can do for you is help steer volunteer projects, can come in, you know, recruit volunteers, and I'm not, you know, and I'm talking about volunteers that really come in and put in a day's work, and, and get some actual projects, you know, done in the park. And the landscaping money that goes along with that also will provide some of the plant material and things to do that. I know.
I should point out, this is a position that will require an RFP because of the dollar amount that's specified in there, so it's not like we can go out and, the ones that are bolded, we can use contractors that are in existence, same with the contractor for streetlights, we can choose between those two, but the ones that aren't bolded, some of them will be bid, this would be one that you could use an RFP for because, and select the most qualified individual, because it is some kind of a specialty.
And that hundred and fifty dollar an hour fee is something that I, was kind of a cross, we, yeah, we could probably get somebody very good for fifty, but at times we'll need somebody in the landscape architect realm, perhaps, that might be a little higher. We're currently paying our town arborists a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, so it's a pretty good, as Denise Coverman said, it's a, it's a good budgeting number to use, at least to get us a pot of money to work with, and of course we'll stretch that as far as we can. I'm not saying we're gonna go out and hire a person for that amount, it's, it's just a budgeting item to get that rolling, to help enhance the park if you should so choose to select that item.
Council Vice Mayor Reese, do you wanna?
Well, I think, you know, obviously I can, I go with everybody that's said already, the safety items, that's a given, we should be taking care of that. The issue with the street lights, or, I mean, we have a consultant, we need to iron out it, that's part of our plan already, but either way, we should know what our plans are, so we can, you know, have that taken care of, so, I think we've talked plenty about the master garden.
Yeah, the streetlights are great, I mean, we've got a bunch of maps of our streetlights, and they're, they were born before I was, and they're, they're kinda sketchy, and, yeah, I've got some, some old ones that I found in one of Troy's old drawers in his, in his thing, and they're, they're kinda handwritten, and we really need to get a grasp. I could probably drive you around and show you all the streetlights, but I think all of you should be able to see them out, a good single map. Be confident, this is what we've got in the town, this is what type of circuit it's running, and we can go forward with that information and do a lot of good improvements in the town. Streetlights are right up there with one of the most important things, at least it's hitting public works on a daily basis, so.
Steve, can I ask you, how important is number fifteen to perform a right-of-way tree inventory?
A right-of-way tree inventory could be done, it's in there, it's kinda funny because it's a pretty low number, we've got a lot of right-of-way trees.
It says seven thousand four hundred and fifty-seven?
Trees.
So it sounds like you're counting them.
There's about seventy-five hundred trees, but our, I actually got that number from MCE, but they said they were gonna subcontract with the tree company that would do it, put us on an electronic service so we'd be able to, there's a lot of things that come up with a right-of-way tree inventory, including what else is in the right-of-way, such as rocks, and, you know, perhaps some other issues, so that, that's one of the reasons we're interested in. And another is, the reason that price is so low is, it's gonna be done, actually, our tree contractor, okay, draw a blank on it.
Kevin Kelty.
West Coast Arborist, who was great, will, will do this tree inventory for like a dollar fifty a tree. A dollar fifty a tree, to go out and, it's the same thing, map the tree, GIS location, size, height, take a picture of it, an inventory of our right-of-way trees. Our residents take care of the right-of-way trees, we're still responsible, I, myself is, is the town superintendent, I can't just look the other way if a tree branch is going out, I can say, "Well, it's the residents' responsibility to trim it," but if they don't, I need to let them know they need to.
From an insurance perspective, if we had that list, from an insurance perspective or risk perspective, they ask for those sorts of things all the time.
Right. So, once again, just another really good thing, you know, that the town has been provided for, for that, so. There was some things that, that we considered also adding to this list, like expanded sweeping. Right now, you know, I'm talking with some of the senior staff in PD even, that the sweeping levels of the town seem adequate, they fulfill our NPDs requirements, they seem to be, we get very little complaints that the town's always messy, we get four townwide sweeps a year, and all our streets with curb gutter or valley gutter get swept monthly, so we decided not to put that on the list. There was, there was an item actually for striping, and it was so high, I didn't even wanna put it on, and it was like over a hundred thousand dollars to re-stripe all our stripes in the town every year, or something like that, that one doesn't make sense, but a lot of these do. There are truly enhancements, these menu items have been, like I said, I worked, like Mike said, I worked with MCE on these, they're not just numbers thrown out there, although some of the math, I don't know how that happened, I apologize, that's my math, I don't know how that one came out to ninety-one, but, but I did work with them to come up with the numbers, and they will stand by them, as far as what those, those numbers are, so.
Well, I, thank you for putting this together, I really appreciate it, and I'm gonna echo the sentiments of my fellow council members and our residents, I mean, the park is our jewel, I mean, we really need to invest in the park. The park is, it's gone through a lot, I know the infrastructure repairs that have been done, and I know that at one time it, residents were donating, you know, specimen plants and unusual exotic trees and things, and I remember the Park and Rec Commissioner telling me, you know, we actually had to tell them to stop doing that because we didn't have the staff to maintain it, right, all these.
Well, and it's difficult when you have all those different exotics living next to each other, and one overhead sprinkler to water them, I mean, it's something that we've gotta watch out for and get a better control of also.
Right, so, so, but it seems like we're, we're kind of at a stage where we really need to have an eye, someone experienced to go through and say, you know, "This needs replanting," and get on a schedule, and there's no excuse for an annual bed to not be refreshed on a regular schedule, I mean, that's, that seems to be something that we should be doing.
Well, when we had annual beds, we were doing that, we also had labor for that, the annual beds.
But we don't have labor.
Pretty much, well, that was, you know, we are gonna, a lot of this adds labor into the park, item number.
Number five? Number six? Number nine? Number nine, purchase and install new plant material?
The one about adding the extra people, including working on the weekends and for, I'm just, thank you, item number twelve, adds, adds.
Doesn't that seem low?
Yeah, that's, that's the one where our math got off, we dropped a digit on the cut.
Yeah, that's way too low.
Right.
Is that twenty-four thousand?
The ninety-one's right, the ninety-one's right, I believe that was.
Thirty-two thousand?
I, you know.
Thirty-two, it's doing like thirty-two thousand.
Well, you indicated that you wanted our okay on the, on the tax.
That's the one that.
Right, and then you're gonna bring them back.
Right.
So what's the agreement?
So, so, you know, if you're gonna bring the extra labor into the park, that's great, but if the labor's blowing leaves all day, that's not great.
No, no, they've gotta have some direction.
So, so let's, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I.
Want to just go one by one?
Yeah, yeah. The increased vegetation trimming for site distance, I think that is critical, 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 because of our traffic situation, so if you think that that's a good number and will help the safety of that.
Yeah, I don't remember all of that numbers.
Number one, we're going number one.
He's just, he's working down the list, I'm, I'm, I mean, as long as you need to do a generating, then we don't want to.
Okay, catching up.
Clean street signs.
Okay, and you're, well, you're looking at the, the, the bolded ones?
The bold, yeah, we're going down number one.
Well, no, he said, "Tell us which ones we don't want."
No, that's, no.
Well, either way.
That's, that's, and maybe we can.
That'd be much clearer which ones we don't want.
Well, I want them all.
Tell us which ones we don't want. That's the fastest way to do this.
I'm in favor of one, two, three.
Me too, yeah.
Okay, I'm in favor of five, but I'd like to see the whole, whole path done.
That, that will be a separate, you know, we redo the, the surface of the path, and it's coming up with the next CIP, the twelve thousand four hundred and thirteen takes care of the root roughness and filling the cracks prior to that coming in, okay, so the whole path will receive a treatment, the whole path will not be repaved, the whole path will be made safe.
So that's in your regular maintenance of your CIP?
Yes.
Okay, so, so six is okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to see eight, I personally would like to see eight, something done in eight, because that's the master gardener, we have to go out with an extra RFP, we understand that.
Well, but I, but let's talk about number seven, let's, you know, which is prep and paint all city-owned streetlight poles, that seems like a lot of money.
That's, that's two hundred and seventy-five poles, that's, you know, most of them are way beyond their, when they should have been painted.
Two hundred and twenty-five according to your charging.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I think our, seems like we're getting.
Many of our streetlights, you know, they really look in bad shape paint-wise, and they look awful actually.
And once again, I'd get two hundred and twenty-five of our streetlights painted for thirty-nine thousand dollars, that's, that's.
That's a good deal.
That's, and that is through MCE doing a subcontract, they went out, got prices.
Well, we'd have to go get an RFP for that.
Lipstick on a pit.
We have to get, we have to get three bids on that.
Right.
Yeah.
But I know we can get one for at least that.
Excuse me, over twenty-five thousand dollars requires a formal bid.
A formal bid.
Right.
Formal.
That's our purchasing, yes.
Right, but, but that number there, I've been told that we'll, we'll get at least that price.
Maybe we do one, do a couple each year, do a couple each year, I mean, this is not an annual number, I hope, and some of these numbers are annual numbers.
This is a one-time.
One, one every ten years, or one every twenty years?
Yeah, when was the last time they got painted, nineteen forty?
That's inside.
That's what I was gonna say, can't we do like?
I would say that we should do all of those.
All at once?
One year, not, not do it over a five-year period, for thirty-nine thousand dollars, we ought to paint those streetlights.
What do you think?
Council's one-eleven?
That's one that we'll go out to bid.
We may only, we paint the drainage now, so we don't need to.
I'm just making sure that Steve hears this is what going on.
Yeah, just don't go hire somebody, Steve, without getting.
So, on number, on number.
Right, you just gotta be one of those bids, and that's everybody else.
Number eight?
Number eight, can I, I would say that, just based on what I said before, the master gardener that we hire, we've got to make sure he realizes he's responsible for beautifying the park, and that he has some authority to come up with projects, you know, the labor will perform, and, and every year, behind him, every six months.
Jim, it will come back to council.
You will pick them.
Yeah, this will come back to you.
Okay, so let's move on.
That's fine.
And then the plant material?
I'd rather see what the master gardener does.
Right, I mean, that, to me, that seems like a long number.
So why don't we, why don't we get a master gardener, or a professional landscape person, there's already another project going on to put new plants in the park as well, let them look at that, and then look at, then they can come back and say, "This is what we need to do," and then that would be.
Council, we're gonna send this out to bid on, on that project.
So, I think there's, I think, yeah, we're gonna hold that one, okay, and item number ten, and I think that we've got our numbering wrong, because if you go to the top of the page, the concrete street markers doesn't have a number.
Oh, yeah, you're there, yeah, 'cause it just says street.
Right, so the quarterly streetlight surveys, I wanna know what our new vendor is gonna be doing, because would that not be folded into their contracts somehow?
We're not gonna duplicate services, if the, if the vendor does it, we're gonna have them do it, I think this is a.
They're available to do it, but I know for this price, we can get it done quarterly.
I think the mayor's point is, if it's part of the services that are provided to the town at the cost of the vendor bid them, they need to do it, because we're not gonna pay anything additional for that.
They're already doing it, why pay?
Yeah, we're repaying them once, and they're supposed, they have it in their scope, just, all's we're saying, Steve, is just verify, it's not in scope.
We're not duplicating this.
Okay, so then we'll go to ten A at the top, increase the amount of concrete street markers that are replaced, you're estimating seventy-five of those.
Right.
Okay, I wanna make a, a point that they need to be done cleaner and neater, especially the ones that are refurbished, I know that street markers have been refurbished, and I've had calls from residents saying, "It looks like it was done by a second grader because it's gooey and the, the black luttering is not, you know, clean and crisp."
And that, some of those are just, that's why they need to be replaced, they've just gotten, you know, through the years, they're just too.
You know, it would really be nice if we could, if we had street markers that would show up in the headlights of your car.
Well, we throw reflect to beat them, and when they're fresh, they, they work pretty well.
Yeah, but once they're.
So you're assigned to quality control.
Yeah, quality control.
We will have a contract.
And then, item number twelve, you've got, you've got a, a number, a number for us?
Thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventy.
Thirty-two thousand, that seems better.
All right, okay. I don't know, actually, I like the old number, but I wouldn't like the project.
Well, yeah, I know, but nine hundred and twenty-five hours.
Steve should do it for twenty-four seventy.
Actually, that's a, that's a critical, that's a critical number.
So, so, and also, so, you know, this isn't gonna be the same people out here, for whatever ones you're choosing, doing the same work and charging them, this is all extra labor, these are the same guys that are here with additional people coming in to do this work, and we made that real clear with our contract, and this is.
We just have to make sure that they know what they're doing, okay?
Additional stuff.
Are veridum replacement signs, there's specimen trees in the park?
Seven seventy-five, I don't know if we need it, but I'm not gonna go. We already got them there, we cut down the trees, and the stakes are still there, just pick them up and move them over, because it says cork oak, and there's a stump, okay, just move it over where there are.
Or just have.
We'll just go with that one.
Item number fourteen, this is all the.
Can I ask a number fourteen?
Yeah.
On fourteen, how does this tie in with the proposal that we had recently to replace all the streetlights, from a series-type streetlights to a parallel streetlights?
Well, we haven't had a proposal on that yet.
We've just talked about it, and we hired a new light vendor.
Talking about it, first step for that has gotta be this, the inventory and figure out what circuits are what, and that's.
Okay, because that could change, that could change a lot.
It's gonna change.
Okay, so item number fifteen, we decided that that was important because of insurance, okay? All right, so, what we've.
So what did we eliminate?
Well, we eliminated number nine.
And number four.
And number.
Four.
Yeah, number four.
Right.
And we may add that one, but let's eliminate.
Right.
Now we move to the thirty.
Number ten, we're gonna verify and then duplicate directions.
Oh.
That's a good one.
Okay, all right.
Was number eleven passed, I'm sorry?
Number eleven was passed.
Oh, actually.
Ten A was passed too, Steve.
Yeah, ten A.
Ten A, ten A and eleven.
Except cleaner and neater.
Right.
And twelve on the new cost.
Okay, that's it.
Now we're on number thirteen.
Now we're on, okay, is that all? Everybody? Go to that, okay. Well, we're gonna go to number nineteen, which is, um, tasers, and we have a new staff report, thank you, we have a new staff report, and what is different is the three hundred dollars cost savings.
Lieutenant has been waiting on you for us.
Lieutenant Joe Wade, talk to us, please.
Chief's got a new granddaughter, so he's a.
Oh, does he, really? My goodness, wow, okay, so tasers.
Okay, tasers, recommendation is to purchase twenty-five new tasers, we, back in two thousand and four, we purchased twenty-two tasers, and the model that we purchased back then is called the X-26, and the new one, you'll hear, you'll see, it's a very subtle difference, it's the X-26P, and it's really just, it's got new technology, it's about the same, the specs are pretty much the same, but the technology is new. Officer injuries, studies show officer injuries drop by seventy-six percent when a taser is used, Califor, California Department of Justice reported that suspects' injuries are reduced by sixty percent when less lethal force options are deployed, which is what this taser is. And the twenty-five tasers would account for nineteen sworn, three reserves, and three spares. The spares are important, we found, since two thousand and four, they do break, like any other piece of, of equipment that you get, electronic equipment. As you'll know, as you'll notice in the fiscal impact section, we had originally, in the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, fourteen supplemental budget, we originally anticipated the purchase of only fourteen new tasers, and we were gonna get the remaining eleven tasers the next fiscal year. However, Taser decided to discontinue, or rather, they made the announcement they were gonna discontinue the X-26, and really, you just can't get parts for it, you're not gonna be able to get replacement parts or replacement tasers, and not only did it seem like a good time and the right time to buy, but, I'll give you a little, I'll give you a little history, when you, when a taser would break in the past, it usually had something to do with the battery, and when the battery goes dead, the way Taser had it set up was that you would send a taser in, and they would try to get you a replacement as soon as they could, but it's costing between five and seven hundred dollars, so it didn't make sense to pay five to seven hundred dollars for a used taser that we were gonna get back, one right now, since we're not even gonna be making them anymore, to get the newer, better version. to get the newer, better version of, of what's out there.
Okay. Uh, Joe, I've got a couple of questions. How many times have we used tasers this year in Athens?
This year in Athens, what, well, actually what I'll do is I'll give you a, of how many times we've used it.
Just give me a rough idea.
Uh, well, we haven't used it, I'm guessing in the manner that you're asking where we've actually deployed it and shot the darts out at somebody, correct. Where, where we find most of the use in TASER and since, it's been roughly twenty times, uh, since, uh, we got these in two thousand and four, not that we've actually deployed them at somebody, but we have a, a staff that we keep that's called, uh, TASER, well, it, it's a TASER deployment, but not in the sense that you're thinking. It's a TASER deployment, um, where we actually pull the taser out, we actually pointed at somebody, a potentially violent resistor, and then they go with the program and we don't have to use it. And the reason we document that is because that to us is equally as important, uh, because the bottom line is that the TASER is supposed to be used as a-
So you're saying we've never tasered anybody in?
Uh, we, there's been five instances when we've actually tasered somebody, but there's been obviously four times that many.
Okay, let me just ask you one more question.
Sure.
This, this replacement TASER, X-26, is the one that's been replaced?
P, yeah.
The X-26P would replace the X-26.
Now, a lot of these have been sold, right, in the United States? Must be a huge number of those that have been sold. I mean, I don't know what the number is, but it must be a huge number. And therefore I would think that on an off-market basis, somebody would come up with replacements for those, even if TASER doesn't. Especially batteries. Have you heard of anybody that go, I mean, when my cellphone breaks, Samsung for instance, I can go online and get batteries from my Samsung, not from Samsung. Can you do the same thing on these old tasers?
No, you can't get new TASER, you can't get, there are no other companies that make TASER batteries. It's exclusive to TASER.
Is that right?
Yeah. And, and batteries aren't the only problem. I mean, there's, there's wear and tear, there's electrical, uh, components, there, there's weather elements. Like anything else, you gotta get officers, you know, to, to clean them out regularly, to make sure they do a spark test regularly. Uh, these things half of the huge-
There's no secondary market for parts for these old tasers?
Not for parts.
Okay, all right, that's all I have.
Uh, so Joe, uh, thanks for the report and, 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 uh, the presentation. Um, you said that we were gonna buy, you know, half of them this year and half of them next year. Uh, and some of them are going out of service, uh, and there's no spare parts. So could we still replace half of them and then just keep those other ones, uh, in spares? And then, so the other, if any of them do go out, we just throw them away or recycle them or whatever we would do with them and just take one out of inventory? And, and just stay on the program where you already are? Or is that gonna cause a major problem? Because I would think that shooting them is gonna be the same. I realize you, you put in your, in your presentation that all of your officers have been trained. I guess they're trained on both really, because they're trained on the new one as well as they have the old one, so.
Yes, the, the new thing is the technology. There's a much easier way to download the information. Before, when there was a, uh, an upgrade, it would come in the form of a CD. So you, you, you throw out your old CD and the new CD had the new, had all the new information on it. Um, and now, and that comes in the form of, you can do this all online and you can get all the updates online. And it uploads much faster and the, and the amount of information that you get is greater and more detailed. So, um, to give you an idea now, we have, we have twenty-two and I have, uh, four of them that are not functional. And the reason I'm not sending those in is because TASER has come out and said, if you send us your tasers, whether they're working or not, your X-26s, we'll give you a hundred dollars for each of those. So rather than, uh, spend, you know, five to seven hundred dollars to get one of these things fixed when they cost roughly eight hundred and fifty dollars, it just didn't make sense to keep the others hanging around when we could get money for them.
So there's a, there's a credit of a hundred dollars per item for the twenty-two that we're turning in, as you're showing here. So that, that, that number that was handwritten in on the original thing, that's, that's the correct number?
That, well, actually, so even though we only have twenty-two, the new correct number is twenty-five, which is on the second staff report. It's updated because in between the time when the original came out, the representative said, I will give you a deal, I'll give you twenty-five, I'll give you credit for twenty-five since you're getting twenty-five.
Could we sell them to another department that couldn't get, uh, another city, for example, that couldn't, uh, afford to buy new ones?
We would prefer not to go there because of liability reasons, because then we become the insurer and that would not be a smart move. Twenty-five thousand dollar total purchase of tasers, when you now expose yourself to several million dollars if someone were to die from a, a taser that is X years old and now somebody deploys it without training and stuff. I, I would be really hesitant to think that would be a good idea.
So it's a reasonable question?
It was.
Well, and the other issue with that is, is we are seeing the other agencies in our county, uh, and throughout the state of California also going to the X-26P just because there's not gonna be available parts or replacement, uh, replacement, uh, weapons at the X-26 level.
Well, obviously there are because TASER is buying them back for a hundred dollars, but, uh, okay. All right, so you're saying in, in your mind, you don't think a two-part and having some of them and, and, and just as replacement, full units is a prudent thing to do?
No, because if I get an X-26 that goes down, one that I kept, uh, midway through two thousand and fourteen, there's not gonna be anything to replace it with. I'm gonna end up having to buy an X-26P then. And then I may not, and TASER is saying that this rebate is only good for the remainder of this year. So it, it's only a hundred bucks per TASER, but it's a hundred bucks.
Yeah, thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Um, one question. We do not track how many times the TASER's been pulled and not deployed, correct?
We track how many times it gets pulled, uh, and actually pointed at somebody, but not, well, and, and deployed as well, yes.
Okay, so the number that Jim got of five is deployed.
So the number, yeah, that Jim got of five is, is that's how many times-
It's been fired.
It's been fired at somebody.
Number of times possibly that it's been pulled from the last year?
In the last year, fifteen to twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so can you just walk me through-